Seventeenth, is, um, do I have a motion to accept the changes to the agenda? Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous vote with Demming and Barrett out of the room. Ms. Lucy, will you please read those changes?
To our policy agenda, we're substituting exhibit B and C only on resolution 4C. We're substituting item 4F, which is the resolution concerning the acknowledgement of sales tax collected for tourism project sales. And to our consent agenda, we're substituting item 5B, the exhibit B only, and we're adding item 5P, resolution accepting the annual certificate of compliance officer regarding issuance compliance for outstanding obligations.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended? Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Guines. All in favor? Unanimous vote with Demming out of the room. Moving on to the presentation agenda, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome everyone to our last meeting of the year, so, uh, that concludes my report.
Yeah. Hallelujah. Moving on to departmental reports. Oscarinda, are they available?
Yes. Hello. Um... Can I turn this one? Come on. So today, um, today we have installed the last of the base course of asphalt paving. This is on Forest. We did the Kiesler Gate on Friday, and this is the last bit on Forest. We also... That last little piece on Park Court, um, also, uh, will be complete by the end of the day. Um... We will continue with sidewalk and restoration work on Forest. Base course of asphalt was completed on Benaki and Quavis. We have sidewalk and restoration crews, uh, will be starting on Benaki tomorrow. The final utility on the project is the sewer lift station on Kiavet. It is, uh, being installed. This road, this work is off-road, it's not affecting any residents, and, uh, the rehab of that, uh, pump station will be complete, um, in January. We have crews in all areas working on landscaping and cleanup. We're moving forward with hiring another fencing subcontract to assist in completing the fencing throughout the project. Surface course of asphalt was installed this week on Nixon, North Division, Huff Alley, Walker, Car Quote, and Davis. The next streets that we'll be installing surface course of asphalt are on our Main Street, North Division, Elder, Parker, Bradford, and Cruces. We are doing final punch-out items in all phases of the project. By the end of the day, we will have completed all the items on the SXSN punch list, which to... The SXSN is, uh, all the streets to the east of Oak Street and a couple little streets, uh, Crawford and, um, Old Back Bay. And by final punch list, I mean down to things that are on the punch list are like removing our fifteen mile per hour construction signs. So those, we have four signs, that'll be removed today, but all of that work is done. Post-construction video has been submitted today, so all of that is done in SXSN. And then we're working on, um, closing out, and just so that you know in what priority... This is GRN4 up here by the harbor. That's our, uh, we've completed. We had some, some issues we had to take care of, all those were taken care of, we're just waiting to do a walkthrough with the city. GRN5, working on, uh, we should be just about complete by the end of this week with all major repairs that need to be made in that area. And then probably at the beginning of the year, set up a walkthrough with the city on that. And then DIV 1 and 2, these areas, uh, we're working on punch list items there as well. And then we also have, uh, video crews that are working diligently to complete the required videos of the sewer and the drainage.
More questions?
You know, some of these products that I talked about before, which you on Port Avenue and that, the list to clean all it up, y'all gonna, now you getting most of the asphalt laid, and go back and straighten out the problem with the driveways, the fences, these little thing that people had problem with, you know?
One of, one of the things that'll help speed that along is, we now no longer have to install curbing. That's a really productive crew, they're gonna flip and start doing a lot of restoration work. So a lot of these crews have become available where we want, we only sidewalks we really have left to do, other than if we have to repair something, is Benaki and Forest. So once those crews get finished doing that, then they'll help. So all that work will start happening on a quicker basis. Same with the fencing as well.
Well, I'm glad to know that. When anybody calls me, I'll be able to tell them, that they'll get, they're, you're getting ready to get into that the next few months.
So I had, um, the property owner right there where we're doing the, on Park Court, where we're finishing that little asphalt. So he saw we were there, and I told him, there's no sense in us, there, it's just a piece of property, the fence work needs some repair, it's a special type of fence, it's a masonry fence, so we have several masonry fences that we have to fix, and, um, none of them are down, none of, they're just damaged. So we, it just really made the most sense to find one brick mason that could kinda handle them all. So he called me, and I was like, yeah, it'll, once that work gets complete, we have several others, and that'll be taken care of.
Well, thank you, and Merry Christmas to you.
Thank you, to you too.
Mr. Guines?
Yeah, um, again, just for the note of it, that, um, coming up January 1st will be, um, a year, a year past what we expected, and, uh, we still have a lot, a long way to go, in my opinion, with no section completed after five years of work. What I'm gonna ask is, that each one of the sections you have there, we have a project manager there, there, Walt, which you're familiar with, uh, what I would like to see, is each section by section, all the things that we have left, and a timetable of when they'll be completed. There's still sidewalks in each one of those areas, there's still fencing, there's still landscaping, and other little things need to be done, um, certain areas that have been de-obligated, uh, I still haven't had that information, so, the thing that I'm gonna ask is, uh, that if you would, uh, get with him, I would like to have that information because, at this point, I still don't have it. So I appreciate if you guys could kinda give me a timetable, because next year, I don't wanna be going through that another year. Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mr. Trago. Moving on, council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, another busy weekend, City Biloxi was a great, uh, the marathon, and we went to that, I had a brother of mine, the daughter's hu- husband is, ate up with cancer, and he always ran these things. So my son-in-law pushed him for the thirteen miles in a cart, you know, and they got to the finish line, and he got, and he run across the finish line. It was pretty exciting, you know, he don't have a lot of time, but I took him home, tell him how to go when you get to the hospital, go home, kept nothing else left for to do. It was just tough, but it was, it was good crowd, and I tell you what, I was surprised at people, I was at the MGM Ball at the finish line. You know, so many people involved, and I think it was forty-eight different states, that thing's pretty huge. And to thank the people running, get up there all over the morning, run for twenty-six miles, only person I know who'd do it would be Nathan. Because I thought about doing it, but I, I woke up and got out, I got out, that was a dream, so I quit doing that, you know? Had, uh, a history at the library last year, it was pretty interesting, the guy back in the fifty, took a lot of pictures of old Biloxi and stuff like that, and those things are pretty unique, that ball was there, and you learn a lot, you know? Of course, then you can explain a lot to them, a lot of things that happened on the park, how they changed from the old schooners to the, the motors, I mean, it's just interesting, and they did a good job of presentation of that, I thought they were pretty good. Paul could probably elaborate on it a lot more, but, you know, there's a lot of things that they do, they're just, we miss, and you need to go to these things. It's just, you just always pick up something, you know, you always think you know a lot, but you always learn more every time you go to something like that. So anyway, other than that, just, uh, everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years and a Grinchy Snow Christmas, yeah? You look good in a green outfit. Thank you.
Mr. Guines?
You call him Mike Leonard, the Grinch?
No, the, the tall skinny one.
Oh, the other one.
The tall skinny one.
Uh, thank you, George. Um, I just wanted to thank Director Bell. Director Bell, uh, she, uh, came on out to Henry Beck Park, uh, we had Beck the Halls in Henry Beck Park, so we had a great, wonderful time, uh, had a lot of the local preachers come out and do the twelve, twelve days of Christmas, so, give kudos to her, I mean, uh, even we thought it was gonna rain that day, and, uh, but, but soon as it started, I mean, the crowd filled up, and we had a joyous time, uh, Beck in the Hall. So, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank Director Bell for all what she's done. Merry Christmas to everyone, and Felix, nabby-dah. That concludes my report.
Mr. Demming?
Oh, okay. Got better saying it, being a...
All I have is, is just a thank you, Chief. You had the Christmas party for the police department this weekend, it was a wonderful event, thank you for the invite, I appreciate it, and no matter how bad the weather was, Paul's hair still looked great.
Mr. Tisdale?
Felix, nabby-dah. A couple of things, real quick, Pine Grove, that drainage project is just, I think it was, uh, uh, is it DNA Underground? Did a very good job, but, but stayed in touch with the, with the supervisor on site, they're just waiting for a little bit of compaction to occur, then they're gonna pave that center where they, they replaced the line, and, thank you so much, I appreciate it, I know the folks out there in that neighborhood appreciate it, that paving will be done, I assume, just in the next week to ten days. Beg your pardon?
Next up, Churchill.
Be still my foolish heart. This could be the best Christmas ever.
Well, it'll be...
Day is the season to be jolly, right? I'm, I'm real jolly on the inside. Uh, I, I do want everybody to have a safe and memorable Christmas with your family and friends. Thank you.
Mr. Glavin?
Yeah, thank you, um, and I'll just, uh, kinda mention, open with mentioning, the Wool Market Christmas Parade was another hit, and, uh, we had four councilmen that attended it, and, uh, really appreciate that group, I'm, I'm sure, uh, Mr. Barrett's report will give you some more details. Uh, also wanna mention the Mississippi Gulf Coast Community College again, they won a national championship, their, uh, fifth national championship, I believe it is, and, uh, I think the mayor's extending some kinda invitation soon that we should hear about. Also, Jane Trahan, uh, she used to, she's a Biloxian, and she was visiting, uh, this week, and she just mentioned about some of the lights, especially along the, the I-110 and, uh, loop and everything, she was concerned that maybe some of them are not either working or they're turned off. I, I know from time to time, we select some lights to kinda turn off, uh, to, to save some money, I don't know if it's a product of that, or if it's, uh, lights that need to be looked into replacing. And, uh, that gives me a segue into Julia Gressi, uh, she's a resident in my ward, she, uh, sent me an email today, asked me to mention this in the council meeting, that, uh, the lights on her street, especially the intersection of, or, 653, 655 Michelle Drive, was changed out by the power company, she believes, and, it's so much better, she feels so much safer, it's, it's a little bit brighter, and, uh, she just requested if we could look at that, and, as these lights are changed out, if we can change it with the brighter lights, if that's possible, that's fine, I, I don't know if there's some kinda condition, we do the amber because of, they're not intrusive, or not, they're, you probably get complaints that they're too bright if you, if you put, uh, bright lights, but she said it was a significant difference, she's been asking for a long time. I told her I don't believe it's anything we responded to, it was just the lights went out, and that's what they replaced them with, and she said it was noticeable. And I wanna echo, well, before I get to, to that, I wanna single out Gerald Everett. Gerald, uh, is also a Biloxian, and, uh, he hosted his second annual, uh, little kids' Christmas party, and it's growing bigger and bigger, he extends his home, and he has Santa Claus there, and he buys presents, uh, for all the kids that participate, and there's goodies and all that kinda stuff, and it's just, it's just what Christmas is all about, and community is all about, and I just wanted to let the record note that his efforts was appreciated. Uh, and then finally, uh, Councilman Lawrence, uh, talked about his son-in-law and his, uh, his family, and, and, what an act of, uh, I mean, an act of something that you, you would say is, is just good. Danny Schemetta, uh, like he said, pushed his friend that's suffering, Scott Lang, uh, over the fi- finish line. Danny ran a half marathon this past week, I, my wife and I was hosting a pusherata drive-by, and Danny stopped, and he said, just finished running a, a half marathon, and then the godfather of the council came by because he didn't want everybody to gobble up those things, but, and he got his share, but, uh, if there is ever, Mayor, a proclamation or some recognition for a good deed, uh, Danny Schemetta certainly deserves it, uh, it was very touching what he, what he did, and, uh, his, he shared his story, or his wife's, uh, shared his story, uh, with all of us, and, uh, you know, we just felt that too, around this time of Christmas.
Did he win his age group?
He probably does, man, there's not a lean of, uh, I mean, there's not an ounce of fat on him, he, he's lean, and, and, and he runs all over the place, he's in his fifties, right?
Yeah.
Upper fifties, and he runs like he's twenty years old, but, uh, you know, your, your family, Danny, he's certainly somebody that's very, that we can respect, and, and that's a...
Yeah, that was pretty special what he did for him.
So, uh, and then last but last, not least, and this is also sad news, but we, we just wanna celebrate his passing, also Jerry Ellis, we should've, I should've brought it up last meeting, but I'm gonna bring it up this meeting, uh, Jerry passed away, and if, if we could, uh, close our meeting in, in memory of, uh, Jerry Ellis, I would appreciate that consideration today. Thank you.
Uh, we had the third annual Wool Market Christmas Parade this, uh, past Saturday, and we had perfect weather, um, this year we had fifty-three units in the parade, a great crowd turned out, and we couldn't have done it without the help of, um, all of our departments, Public Works cleaned up, mowed real good on the parade route, got the cones out, our Parks and Recs Department, Sherry Bell, and her team did a great job, um, with the after deal, uh, Wool Market Elementary, our police department showed up, shut down the roads, good escort, fire department helped out as well, and, uh, then we had several council members, and the mayor showed up, and, uh, it was great. Um, I think we started out the first time with about twelve or thirteen units, and so in three years, we're up to fifty-three. So, um, Corvette Club was a part of it, we even had a guy that was passing through, and he was in a Corvette, and somebody saw him at the Chevron, they thought he was part of it, and they said, hey, are you here for the parade? And he said, no, but I can be. So this guy was on his way, this guy was on his way home from vacation, headed home to Florida, and ended up being in the parade, and so, um, but we had a great time, and the crowd was really, really good crowd, so, uh, we expect that to continue to grow. And, um, Vincent was out there, and if you weren't able to be a part of it, you can go to the City of Biloxi website and, um, watch it on YouTube, and so he has some great video footage of that.
He did a poor job catching beads, uh, you know?
And then, I think, um, echoing what George and Kenny said about the, the marathon, these events really grow, and I think this is about the fourth year that our, um, that we've had it here on the coast, and, uh, some of those events, like the Boston Marathon and New York Marathon, these things have been going on for decades, and if, with the, the flat lay of the land here, it's a really good race, and so, I believe that that will continue to grow and really become a big deal, not just regionally, but nationally, um, as long as they keep it here. I was planning on running that, and I thought that I was, um, younger than I was, and, um, went and played basketball with my son, and messed up my knee a little bit, so I was unable, unable to run, so hopefully next year I'll be able to, to do it, but, that's all I have. I hope everyone has a Merry Christmas.
Yes, okay. Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, I forgot one comment, I had planned to run in that marathon too, but, but Nathan messed up his knee.
I was not planning on being in that marathon, not at all. As we're closing out the new, the end of the year and going into the new year, I would also like to thank all the department heads and everything, everyone has been just a blessing to work with, we have a good team there, and they make us look good, guys, and, so, keep up the good work to all of you, and can't wait for 2020. Move on to citizen comments, we have forty-five minutes allotted, each citizen gets three minutes each to speak, once you reach the desk, please write your name and address, as well as stated aloud for the record. Anyone on my left, your right, that would like to come up and speak? No one? Anyone on my right, your left, that would like to come up and speak? No? Anyone in the back?
That, see, Billy come, uh, he got the thing at the visitor's center this weekend. Billy?
Yeah, our, because our seventh annual holiday passes this weekend, visitor's center, both Saturday and Sunday, from nine to four, we do continental breakfast each morning, um, that's complimentary, Santa will be there, and Augie will be driving the tour train, giving, um, rides around the neighborhood, playing Christmas carols, so, everybody come out, and we've got children's activities set up for them to do art activities, they, they actually get to make something and bring it home, and to hang it on the Christmas tree.
That's, that turns out to be a nice event. A lot of people does, a lot of people come.
And they got gift wrapping, right?
They do have free gift wrapping, even though Andre backed out on me.
Oh, I'll get on to her for you.
At breakfast, that's in the morning?
Anyone else like to speak? All right, if not, citizen comments are now closed. Moving on to the policy agenda, Ms. Lucy?
Ordinance to amend section twenty-three, three-five-eight-six of the LDO concerning structures located upon 141 Suter Place and 622 Water Street as City of Biloxi landmarks.
Do you have a motion?
I'm Oden. Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale, being a first reading, we'll move on to ordinance B.
Ordinance to amend appendix A to section fifteen-one-two of the Code of Ordinances.
All right, previously moved by Mr. Glavin, and seconded by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Glavin?
Uh, yeah, just a little bit, so, this is just to make sure the positions that we currently have, we're putting him in the right slot. Mr. Leonard?
Yes, sir, I just was looking to see if Jill was here. Um, this is a, a blown-up version of what we're talking about. There are six-hundred-and-fifty or so city employees, changes every day a little bit, of those, there are a hundred-and-fifty job descriptions. What this, what the compensation schedule does, it groups all of the jobs into, into, uh, grades, grade, grade ten, grade eleven, grade twelve, and then into steps, where they could advance. What we're doing here is, we should do this annually, to be honest, and haven't, we're supposed to, uh, update, the, this is a twenty, today is a 2016 document, has not been updated since 2016, so we got four years, four years, in that four years...
So perhaps, perhaps I would recommend during the budget process, we incorporate this?
Exactly, that's the time it would ought to be done. In, in the, in the four, in the four years, twenty-one positions have been adjusted, in one way or the other, in some cases, positions went away, and some positions are new positions, and if there were new positions, they went to the Civil Service Commission to be reviewed, or if there were major changes in their job duties, they went to the Civil Service Commission for review, otherwise, these are just, uh, the adjustments that the city has made for various reasons during those four years. It's not a huge change, but we, we really need to catch up, this is really a cleanup, is what it is.
Okay. Nothing else?
Yeah, I, I think there are a number of positions this go around, that, as you said, about twenty-one, that are being reclassified, more or less. Did any of the figures, numbers, amounts for the different steps or grades change? I don't think they did.
No, this is, this is, there is, there, this is, there were changes in grades, but there were no changes in the steps, so those are the same steps and the same amounts that were there in 2016.
In other words, all we're doing is reclassifying the positions?
Twenty-one positions were either reclassified, or, or gotten rid of, or introduced new positions.
And I noticed that there's incentive pay for, um, CID officers, there's a ten percent incentive, there's a five percent incentive for field training officers, and, and those have been there for a while, and I had spoken with you, and there's a two-and-a-half percent incentive for field training officers in communication and, and division, and in speaking with you, you said that's associated with the liability these field training, or, these training officers have.
Yeah, our police chief would explain this, I'm sure, much better than me, but, uh, when we, when we assign somebody the duties of a field training officer, whether it be police, fire, or, uh, the communications, uh, working with the, uh, dispatchers, there's a liability to that person, because, should the person he or she trained make a mistake and be, and get sued, then the trainer, oftentimes the person, the question asked is, who trained you? So, you know, people are reluctant to take on those training duties and that additional liability, potentially, unless they get a little bit of extra money in their pocket, so that's what it's there for. When I asked the chief, if we didn't do this, what would happen, he said they wouldn't volunteer.
Right, okay. Um, the only other thing, it's just an observation, I, I would really like to see us look at further overhauling the comprehensive, uh, schedule, next time we talk budget, and that we do that on an annual basis, just to see what's gotta be tweaked, what's gotta be changed. I think currently there are sixteen, is it sixteen steps?
Correct.
I think is what it is, and, and personally, I would like to see some revision based on, uh, the steps and so forth. I, I've spoken a number of times about this, and mentioned it, and hopefully this next year it'll get some traction during the budget discussion, we'll see where it leads. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yep.
Go ahead.
At, uh, we had the budget time, we talked about minimum of thirteen dollars an hour, do we move that up from eleven-fifty? Do we have it in the bottom part, is the minimum we pay is thirteen-something an hour?
We have a number of, not many, positions in this, uh, in this, uh, schedule, that are paid eleven-seventy-five or lower. They're full, full-time people. Uh, and, and that's something that we probably ought to deal with at budget time, is, do we wanna establish a minimum, we up the minimum wage, if you will, for, for the city? Right now, it's, the, the minimum that I'm seeing on here is ten dollars and ninety-two cents an hour.
Well, we did discuss that at budget time, I thought we was gonna move that, 'cause we's losing too many people at the bottom end of everything. You know, you can go anywhere, ten dollars an hour, just don't get it. I mean, you got people like, chief could tell you, dispatch, if they work twelve hours, and you paying them ten dollars an hour, that's midnight through to night, I mean, that's tough, you know? So I mean, I think, somebody thought, I thought we already discussed that, we'd move everything to a minimum of thirteen-something an hour. I didn't think about, didn't think, I suppose, said, I don't like the eleven dollars, I mean, you need to, it needs something, we need to talk about right now, because, you losing a lot of people in this city. I mean, they gotta work at McDonald's to make that much money, and you gonna work in front desk at the, the police department, these important jobs, and you paying them ten dollars an hour? I, I just don't get it.
Well, I mean, that's not the whole compensation package, so, you know, especially for full-time, and, you know, the vacation as well as, you know, with the, uh, insurance comes into play too, so I would, you know, ask that, uh, let's do some workshops and, and, and get to the nuts and bolts, you may have a few people at that, but the majority are over that figure. I agree, I mean, you, you, your employees, you know, do the deal.
And, and the biggest...
But the whole package, there's the whole package, so I mean, you're looking at vacation, that, that's comp, that's compensation also.
Yeah, I know, and the insurance plan is great, but when you're twenty-five years old, ninety-nine percent of them don't use it. I'm just saying to them, that's great for them to have the insurance, but they look at that money.
Yeah, it is, and you could, I mean, there's some opportunities to adjust that, you can make some choices, and, and those choices need to be looked at, you know, the accrual of vacation, you know, when we look at things, uh, getting, two thousand hours of work out of a person, and when you couple it with what we're going on, it, it needs to be taken a serious look and, and, you know, come to some conclusion, but I'm saying, just the raw dollars does not represent the total compensation for those, those employees.
I know, but I'm just thinking it's time for us to move the bottom end up, that's all that is. all there is to it.
Well, it's time to do a lot of things.
Right, no, it's time to do that. You gotta, you gotta take care of these employees, and these employees work hard, and stuff like that needs to be done. You can't expect them to do them kind of shifts for ten dollars an hour. I mean, those are long shifts and they tough, and you're dealing with a lot of John Muck Kattay, you'll deal with a lot of crazy people at night. And you're getting ten dollars an hour, and so they'll walk out in a heartbeat. So I just think it's serious, and all these scales are used on the EEOC always have a reason, when you move somebody, or we doing those steps in the paperwork, like if I move from one grade to the next grade, you have to have the paperwork and other thing to prove why you moved me from certain, one spot to the next spot? I mean, that's a qualification from the EEOC. So I don't know if y'all do that. When you bump somebody up a scale or two, you have to give a reason why you're doing that.
Is that, is that, do you think that's true?
I'm asking you, do y'all do that?
I don't, I don't think it's true.
I mean, that's what, you know, that's why you have the rules and regulations. I have no problem if somebody decides to go up and dump, I think I have no problem with doing it, but you have to prove why you moved George up two steps to one step, that's all. I mean, that's gotta be, you gotta have a reason, a background to do that. You can't just say, well, I'm a, I'm a Robert and give him five steps. Why? Because he came to work every day. Oh, that's not a good enough reason. I'm just, you know, these are things that need to be done, on this compensation scale, there's a reason for this, and there's a reason you move people.
Did I hear I'm getting a raise?
That guy. You got big money, you got big money now.
I was recently informed that a lot of them are not, they used to be reimbursed for when they get a higher certificate and things like that, and they haven't been reimbursed in the past previous years or whatever, so maybe we should look at bringing that back. If they're getting higher certification for us to benefit, we should be reimbursing them.
Uh, we, we talk police and fire by any chance?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I probably think you're, I'm just guessing, you may be referring to the certification that they get, required to get when they come to work for us as a fireman, and they have to become certified as an EMT, and they're required to be-
I don't know exactly what they were referring to, but there already been-
We never, the only additional pay that we get is for educational incentive briefs. But in a lower received brief, they get additional money, but as far as just certification, no. But in some positions, once they get certified to a certain level, they go to the next level, such as dispatch, once they get certified on police-
I believe they were referring to classes and having to travel for those classes and things like that.
Dispatch, dispatch which they do. Life Guard also may get different certifications, they go up from Life Guard one to a Life Guard two. It's a career that they have. It's not so much steps in your compensation, they get to a different grade.
I'll look more into it.
So, this, this is why I had recommended that we look at this comprehensively and have a couple of workshops for the last couple of years. I mean, at, at some point, we get to that point where, and that's where we are today, we're to the point where I think everybody agrees we need to do something, so maybe in January sometime, we can have a workshop and spend a little time talking about all of this and what the implications are.
Thank you.
If I may, yeah, if I may, I distinctly remember this when we were doing budget, that we flirted with moving it, moving up the bottom pay to fifteen dollars an hour, and I think, you know, that's what we're looking at from a, from a national standpoint, I believe, is moving it up fifteen dollars an hour, and that we talked about being a little bit ahead of the curve because of the employees, especially like public works, where we're losing employees, and one of the suggestions that was made was that we considered reclassifying some of those lower-end jobs that we have, some of those ten dollars and eleven dollar an hour jobs, moving them up to fifteen dollars an hour and allowing us to take a look at it and see how it would affect the budget, so that we can kind of consider what we need to do this year or even maybe next year, and we were supposed to get some of those projections. So I think that's where we left off when we were speaking of the, looking at the budget is getting that information, and I don't remember seeing that. So if we can get that information, start looking at it and, and look at a possible way of bringing those jobs, because those are the ones that we lose the most and they do the hardest work, and taking care of some of, some of our public works, our workers who are out there on the grindstone all the time. So if I can get those, or if we as a council can get those, that would help us make a better decision, better informed decision. That's pretty much all I have to say on that.
Mike, do we have to pass this today? Is there any reason we gotta have to do this now, or are you just trying to put it in place?
Yeah, no, sir, you don't have to pass it, this, we can wait another two or three or four years, we've already waited four years now. This is really just a cleanup, is all it is, is this is, this recognizes exactly where we are today.
It could be updated after workshops or whatever, you know, in January or February.
It's basically, they're up, there's twenty-one grades in here that changed over the last four years, we're trying to bring it up, up to today. This is not about compensa, compensation, you're not approving anybody's change in compensation. These changes have all already been made.
How do they, they've already been made, how do they affect future employees, though?
Future?
Yeah.
Well, which we, what we, the, the changes we made are changes in grade, so that means if somebody else was come, would come to work for the city in a, in that grade, they would start at the first step of that grade, that we, so, for example, an engineer, an engineer two was a certain grade, they became an engineer two at a different grade, so their base pay is a little higher now, so the next engineer two that comes will also be paid at that base, whatever the engineer two is.
The increased base that we're adjusting right now.
I think there were a number of steps based on two-point-two-five or two-point-five percent increases, is that what it was?
This is really not a-
Used to be, so we're just kind of cleaning that, that matrix up.
Actually, actually, things are so far out of whack that what used to be two and a half percent, originally two and a half per step, percent step increases could be anywhere from one-point-seven-eight to two-point-seven-five percent, just because this hasn't been cleaned up in a number of years. So that's, that's why I have no problem with moving forward and approving what's on the agenda today, but really, if, if we're gonna look at overhauling this, in my opinion, we can't start soon enough to have some workshops, because these are very thorny issues. I mean, in a nutshell, you've got three variables, you've got the step increases, you've got the classifications, and you have a base hourly rate, those are your variables. If you tweak the, the base variable rate by two dollars an hour, that has a ripple effect on every position in the compensation schedule, and you're talking about more dollars than you might imagine, so, like, I, I won't speak anymore on this today, I flattened the rabbit enough, but as soon as we can get a workshop scheduled, I think we'll be better served to start discussing it early and frequently.
We agree.
Yeah, and the only thing I caution, and I'm like Dr. Tisdale, go ahead and clean it up today, but, but throwing caution to the wind, we, we can't forget about taking care of our employees here, that we have here. Yeah, we're taking care of our future employees now with this, but what about our employees we have now? So that's the caution that I throw out.
All right, so I, I agree and disagree both. One, I, I'm not sure that we should clean up one small section when we have a bigger picture that we have to clean up altogether. Second, like Felix said, what we're doing is, we're addressing something that will, will affect future employees, which means future money, which this wasn't part of the budgeting process, and it really should be reserved for the budgeting process, because it requires additional revenue to be spent potentially if we hire new employees based off these new levels. So I, I think that we should withhold moving forward on this, and like Mr. Tisdale says, look at this whole thing comprehensively. If it's not something we have to do right now, Mike, then I think we should look at this comprehensively.
We're, we're operating right now within this set, we're operating right now. So if something comes in, we're placing people and, and doing things with them, we're doing this right now, so, you know, you give us the blessing, whatever you want, but we're operating with these rules right now.
Then, then again, I don't see, I don't see the need to move forward if you're doing this regardless, I still think we need to look at this as a whole, I don't see why we're plucking one part out of the entire, out of the entire schedule and saying, let's clean up this one little part, when the whole thing needs to be cleaned up. Next week, are you guys gonna come to us with another little tiny part of the schedule and ask us to clean that one up too? And we're gonna, we're gonna piecemeal cleaning this thing up, which does have an effect on the budget long-term, that wasn't part of the budget process this year when we sat down. So I, I really think we should do this comprehensively. If you're already acting on these rules right now, I can't see the necessity.
But if we call for the question, are you gonna vote yes and no, like you said?
I have two hands.
I know some who do.
As a, a point of order, I'd, I'd really like to make this one point, and that is, the changes that are shown in here were made by the administration. We didn't come to the council to ask whether we could change an engineer two from grades thirty-three to grade thirty-three.
You don't have to.
That's, that's our call, that's, that's, it's in, it's built in the budget today, those people who were changed from one grade to another, those twenty or so over the last four years. Those were changes that were made for various reasons, new positions, upgraded positions so that, for example, an engineer two in Gulfport was making more money than an engineer two in Biloxi, and we were losing people. I mean, some of these are, are, are just made economically, decisions that a certain grade needed to be competitive, we had to pay more for it, those are all decisions that the administration made, and it was put in the budget, and the council approved the budget, the funds for that. But we don't come to the council to ask the council if we can move a position, move a grade.
Mike, I'm not suggesting that you do, I'm suggesting that you're creating a new compensation schedule that for future employees moving forward does, will affect the operating budget. At some point, if you do hire new employees, you will have to exceed what we did set as the budget and come and ask us for budget amendments based off the budget we did set, because we're adjusting compensation schedules that we didn't plan to adjust at budgeting time. That's all I'm saying. If we're operating now, I agree, it's an economic interest of yours to hire employees to maintain our city. I agree with you, and I think for those purposes, I don't think many of us would, would have a problem with that. I don't think we would object to most of those discussions, but changing just the base schedules right now, while we have the rest of the schedules untouched and it all needs to be cleaned up, I just think we're being, we're not being prudent enough with regard to the entire compensation schedule, and you guys are doing a great job with what we've already provided and worked with, and like you said, you're already acting on these because you don't have to come to us, but at the, at some point, when you have to exceed the budget to, to hire new people, because-
Replace people.
Our competitive pricing isn't what, what it should be, but then we'll address it at that point, and I think we really need to address the entire compensation schedule as a whole, as suggested by Mr. Tisdale.
Call for the question?
I'll ask one question real quick, please, just one. How much money has this affected that you changed it? How much money?
Changing, nothing, we've been operating-
There's no money.
Changing in money or anything, this is just changing titles and changing headings, really.
Well, if they change the title of your step, then they're gonna be making more money, so they-
Well, they don't automatically go from one step to the other, there's actually a process, so, so this is not gonna change one, you know, we're not, this, approving this is not gonna change the budget one penny.
Right.
Yeah. It only changes if they remove people like-
Future.
Well, if they change grade, they gotta pay them more money.
Yeah, if they change range, but that's a, that's a call, that we, you know, we'll make one, you know, one way or the other, but this is, this is right now, not gonna change anything, just changing titles on the matrix.
All right, call for the question on this ordinance. All in favor? Six-one, deming against. Do we want to go ahead and set up a workshop, Mr. Tisdale? For the whole compensation?
Yeah, it was tomorrow.
We're off for, for spring break. We're off for Christmas break.
I'll let the administration set that up, we can do that January, maybe at our January council meeting, we can agree on it today.
And, you know, I guess this whole thing is not just related to these numbers and these figures, I mean, we gotta take a look at the whole picture.
No, you're talking about longevity pay, you're talking about insurance benefits, just a-
Structure there, and it's all, you know, and I'm sure, there'll be some interaction with the civil service and that sort of thing, but we wanna take a, a real picture of, of what we're gonna do.
So if y'all wanna look at some dates, and maybe we come back in January, we'll settle on a date for the workshop. Thank you.
Set that up for us, Mr. Mayor.
This is something really like the end of the month, they were meeting at the end of the month, of January.
January, yeah, okay. Moving on, Ms. Lucy?
Moving on, moving on.
Resolution requesting the Mississippi Legislature to authorize the removal of cap on cost of living increases for two retirement systems of the City of Biloxi.
Do you have a motion?
I'm moving.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, y'all, put a substitute in it, would, would we change anything, Mike? A lot of paperwork we got here today.
Yeah, nothing's being changed other than removing the cap, but to do that, we have to show the legislature, these are the existing bills and what is being deleted, so you've gotta go in about six or seven pages in, and where it had that cap, that's just being struck through.
And this actually, as far as our percentage is cheaper for us.
Yeah, because it's so little. Council has previously, by resolution, approved that we would do this, but the PERS people in, in Jackson would not act on it until we had the legislation changed. So this changes, this will go to the, administer, to the, go to the legislature, a sponsor will push it through, and then we'll be able to remove the cap. When we first started talking about this two years ago, you and I, and, and your bookend down here on the other end, started talking about this, we had about a hundred and ten people that were on the old retirement system. That number has dropped to below a hundred now, and as a result, the millage that would, would be impacted is much less than it was two years ago. So this will require no increase in millage if we remove the cap over this year.
Didn't PERS just kick up our, our contribution requirements, too?
The PERS, they give us every year a, a single sheet of paper that says, if you keep the cap, this is the millage required, and if you remove the cap, this is the millage required. And right now, the millage required is one-point-eight-seven, and we're, we're actually being, we're paying two-point-oh-three, so there's actually extra millage there.
Right, I think the, what I'm referring to is the employee earned contribution, they increase it, so we're putting more into PERS at this point than we were.
This is outside PERS, this is the old retirement systems that predated, uh, going into the state retirement system, it's the firefighters and the police retirement systems.
And so that's paid directly out of our millage?
It's paid directly out of our millage, and it's on, on, you know, not tied to what any other city is doing, it's just completely diss us, and every July, when the state, new state budget kicks in, that's when, you know, we adjust the millage based on how many people are still left in the system.
When did PERS take place? Do we have, do we have overlapping, do we have people that are on both systems?
No.
Okay, so as, as people fall off this system over time, it ceases to exist?
And almost half of the less than a hundred people that are in this system are not employees, but they're surviving spouses, actually.
Okay. I have an further questions.
This program actually would just go away, as it, they pass away more and more, this thing would go away. This was an old setup back then, was strictly the police and fire department, only had the retirement, wasn't anybody else on the city. It was an old program, that's all. That's all you have left on it from the beginning, probably eighty, ninety-eight, ninety-nine people, something like that.
Mr. Tisdale?
As I recall, we also had to give PERS an actuarial study showing that it was feasible and that the city could in fact afford this, I think we, we did that in the past, and, and that was done. I think that's in part of the, the agenda, some of the paperwork that we got. Anyway, this just takes the cap off folks under the old retirement system and allows their benefits to increase a little bit as the cost of living goes up. I think it's prop, for some of them, they've been capped for, who, eight or ten years, maybe, George, some of them, so, anyway, I have no problem, I hope everybody supports it, thank you.
Anyone else? Any more discussion? All in favor? Unanimous votes. Moving on to resolution B.
Resolution rescinding resolution number six forty-five eighteen, supporting the Point Cadet project.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Barrett, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
Is this being rescinded just simply because they're taking this from one project to two separate projects and applying for two separate grants through MDA?
Pretty much it.
Okay. That's all I have.
Mr. Tisdale?
I have nothing to add, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote, with Mr. Glavine out of the room. Moving on to Resolution E.
Resolution supporting an amusement park, parking garage, et cetera, for, to be diverted to tourism sales project.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Just all sister project is the first one. You rescind the need, creating two new ones.
Mr. Tisdale?
Nothing to add to that, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote, with Mr. Glavine out of the room. Moving on to Resolution F.
Resolution supporting hotel and convention center project for Mississippi Tourism Project Sales Incentive Program.
I'll move it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Tisdale. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Don't need anymore.
Mr. Tisdale?
What he said.
Anyone else? All in favor? Unanimous vote, with Mr. Glavine out of the room. Do you have a motion for the consent agenda?
So, moved.
Motion by Mr. Tisdale, and second by Mr. Guines. Any discussion, Mr. Barrett?
Any discussion?
On any item on the consent? Mr. Tisdale?
Uh, yes. On item five P, that was a late addition to the agenda. And deals with the resolution accepting the annual certificate of compliance officer regarding post issuance compliance for outstanding obligations. Have, have we missed some sort of deadline, or?
Well, Jane's in the room. Our bond attorney, who also helps people with compliance issues.
Not really. We're required to do that certificate annually, but your compliance policy doesn't say whether that's a calendar year basis or a fiscal year basis. I would like it to be done within the calendar year, just because to keep ourselves disciplined, and I'm sorry it didn't make it into the deadline.
When, when would you suggest is the best, I would assume we've gotta do this annually. When would be the best time to do this, do you think, Jane?
Well, you can't do it until the end of the fiscal year. So, the best time to get it done is between October one and December thirty-one.
Okay, all right, we're good. Thank you, thank you.
So, thank you, so we're doing it during the best time, right?
Mr. Guines? Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, on this, uh, section L, I thought we were, we were removing that, with, uh, Main Street. Do we not remove that? Or do we have, y'all got a new agenda or something?
No, we, we're not, we're not removing it, because at the council meeting, when we, we looked at the minutes, the minutes showed that the boundary was extended to Bayview, by the north. Forest on the, uh, west, Lee Street on the east, so.
When was that, and I mean, I listened to tapes, I hadn't seen any of that, didn't hear of that. Everything was down Howard Avenue, with, uh, when we stretched it to Howard, nothing to do with housing. Just strictly the benefit downtown Biloxi, Howard Avenue. I mean, this thing, this is not the purpose of that.
Well, what we're gonna do is, we're going with the minutes. It's a, the north boundary is the parcels on Bayview, and it just has four streets as the boundaries.
What minutes you reading? I mean, I listened to tapes, I would never discuss them in the tape, so I don't know where you get the minutes from.
These are the minutes of the council clerk.
You know, 'cause
Looking at with care today.
That was never the intent of this, period.
Well, we plan to come back next year, and we're gonna clarify the boundary to, to take it using the interstate as the boundary, and then using Division Street going west to Forest. I agree with you that this residential neighborhood probably should not be within it, but, but it is within, according to the minutes, what was in the agreement, and
And I don't, I don't know what minutes you reading, I listened to the tape, nobody ever discussed anything. We extend the district of Howard Avenue downtown, the west district of Howard Avenue. Now, how y'all moved it to Bayview, I don't know where you had it come from. So, I mean, this is, is not part of what we're trying to do. So, to me, it needs to be denied. This is not what we want.
It was in the minutes, Councilman Guines talked about going north of Division, and Bayview came out.
That was in Ward Two, that's what it was, that was me pushing it.
Right. And then, then you came
That was me pushing it to go, go past Division Street. And, uh, we all agreed to it, to go past Division Street. Now, um, um, I, I spoke with, uh, who was that I spoke to earlier? I spoke to you earlier about that, that we can rescind that and go ahead and clean it up, because we have two actual resolutions in it, too, that we've done, that they kinda contradict one another, so to speak. Yeah, one was not right. So, probably need to bring it back and clean it up, and put it, put it back out there.
The resolution said, the original resolution with agreement stated, uh, and it was just the district. It was not somebody outside the district, but it was for the, uh, I believe it was Old Sweptman. But it talked about the boundary, when we set the boundary, it was, Division was the northern boundary.
Right.
And I, I heard your message about pulling it, but we went and looked at the minutes this morning. It's, it's on the minutes themselves, uh, in the council record, showing that the boundary is Bayview.
I moved it to Bayview, you moved it all the way to Forest Avenue. I moved it on Howard Avenue. Right.
But then, then we got into
Nothing to do with Bayview. But you moved it.
We got into Gill.
You moved it west, right.
We got into Gill, we got into Forest, it went to Forest. So, if you just take those four streets and draw a square, it's in there. Now, I, I do recommend we come back in January, and we clean that up, and actually have a map showing the exact, 'cause it should, it should be focused on commercial properties that are being
That's the purpose of this.
That are having residential added to it.
So, I mean, that, to me, you, you can't pass this. Then, if you do that, then next one comes up, well, you passed, you can't do that.
Well, the application that was submitted was based on what the minutes showed, so, uh...
But the two resolutions don't read that way. So, that's what I'm saying, you have one resolution with a number, it does not affect this area, that does not include it in this area.
The agreement that was attached to the resolution shows Bayview, and that's what was signed with Main Street. The existing agreement we have with Main Street shows the northern boundary is, is Bayview.
And the only thing I remember about the, with Ward Two, he wanted to go back towards R P, and he went back to Bayview. They had nothing to do with Porter Avenue.
Well, we, we didn't have a delineation of cutting into Ward One and Two. We just really had four streets, that's what Community Development had, that's what they've been accepting applications on. But I think going forward, that's something where we should clean that up going forward.
Well, I mean, it was never the intent, that intent was always to create downtown, things downtown, business of downtown, people living downtown, nothing to do with neighborhoods.
Well, and this, it still, it still had to be vacant for a year, this, to even be, to have, be able to apply for this grant, it had to be vacant for a year, and it did meet that requirement.
We also wanted to stimulate growth in, in the East Biloxi community, and, uh, that, I thought that was an incentive to also stimulate the growth, and that's why I pushed that issue to move it, uh, north of Division Street. Yeah, well, that's, like, why, and you wanna do that Ward Two, that's fine, Ward One, no. So, this is, this, to me, and I hope y'all just vote against this, 'cause this is not what we need to put in place. Then you'll never end it. There's not the purpose of the grant, not the purpose of anything we've done, which will put people, go buy a house, and they have a garage on the back of it, call it an apartment, and we pay them twenty-five thousand dollars. That's not the purpose of this, the purpose is to build Howard Avenue into a business district. And that's the reason we extended it.
There's three residential units being created here, and the total grant is ten thousand dollars on an investment of approximately a hundred thousand dollars. So, that, that's, each one of these is looked on a case-by-case basis, and that's what, that's what's being proposed here. And we also propose to clarify this going forward, uh, at the next meeting. Clarify the boundary and clarify the agreement with Main Street.
Well, just something, you, you can't pass it on here, and go around and say, we can't do it again. That's why this needs to be denied, to me. This is not the purpose of everything. The purpose is to take care of people and business, and anybody wants to build something on top of those businesses, like the lady did over here with Fitz. That's what we're looking for, not this. Somebody had a parking garage or something like that, and make it an apartment. So, this is not the purpose, it never was the intent, and I don't know when we actually, he might have wanted to move anything to Bayview, but what we did with that, there's nothing back there but houses. So, there's no purpose to move the back zone to Bayview, 'cause there's not businesses back there. So, I mean, that's, so, I mean, I'm just totally against putting this on here. I don't know if you wanna remove it, I really don't care, but I'm telling you, you can't vote for this, 'cause you just opened a can of worms for no reason. It was never the intent of the economic development, thing with the fifty, for five hundred thousand. It was all about building businesses, the facade grant, and twenty-five thousand for apartments, not apartments in somebody's backyard. That's not the purpose of that, never was. If that, then you need to just get rid of the old program, if you're gonna make, if you're gonna start this here, this is not gonna fly. You know, maybe that's why they wanted to build them condominiums up there on, uh, Benaki, you know, thirty of them, twenty, that's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Where's the city gonna get that kind of money from? That was never the purpose of the thing.
It's a limited amount, if we change that, we're gonna change that the first of the year, and they're not gonna be applicable, it's not gonna be available for them to apply.
So, and what we need to do to, just get this off, and just table it, take it off? Can't vote for this, I'm telling you, it's just, that's never trouble.
If you don't wanna vote for it, you state you don't feel it's, it's a proper use of the grant, and y'all can vote any of the grants down. But this grant was accepted based on what the minutes said, that this was within
Yeah, but the minutes didn't say what I said. You're going by what Felix wanted to do. Okay, so you can't, then, I didn't say that, and I didn't wanna go that way. So, I let Felix override what I said, and my statement's in the tapes, I listened to it. So, I mean, I'm, so, if that's the case, then the minutes in the tape from me does not state what Felix said. So, I mean, I can't, but you can't, this is not the purpose of the thing, I'm telling you. Well, George, I, I stand by what, what I, what I said on it. You stand by where you want. And, and I, I respect what you said, I respect what you said, I respect how you feel about it. I don't feel that same way. Uh, we moved those boundaries for the purpose that I, I stated earlier, and I'm just gonna stand by it, so I call for the question on it. No, I've, I've moved it the other way, so, say again?
Yeah, I'd like to offer a motion that we table this in order to clarify the designated area for the downtown housing incentive grant. That's my motion at this point.
I'll second that. I think that was the main one. Thank you.
Did we discuss, well, I came in and I asked if we had discussed with the, uh, five F, Mr. Mayor? Uh, Mike, five F is to create a new budget line in the library budget to address the, I guess, the seventy-two hundred dollars to pay for the unarmed security at the libraries. And I get why we wanna have a line on, a line item budget in there. My question is, this was a, when we passed Resolution, uh, Three Forty-eight Ninety-four, it was set to, to pass as a trial period for three months. Can we get a report based off of how that went? I don't know if we're planning to extend this, we're creating a new line item. Is this line item just to pay for that three months, or is this to move forward?
The reason we said three months is it's really just of a trial run. We, we, I, I think ultimately, this library service, the library system ought to provide their own security. They're responsible for operation of the library, and not, and not us. However, we've got a worsening situation in the downtown library, where the librarians are literally, um, afraid to go, come to work some days. And we just thought, you know, let's, let's, let's put it out there, and, um, put three months into it, get, get a quote from an unarmed security system, get, get, uh, somebody in that library, see how it works out, and in the meantime, maybe come back for, to adjust their budget accordingly. 'Cause we, as you pointed out, we, when we, when we gave them less than they asked for, we also said that we'd come back later and look at it. This is just our, my effort to try and get some security in that library. Now, that's not the only library that we're having trouble with. West Biloxi Library has a, a problem, but not as severe a problem as we're having downtown.
Is this a
I have a librarian here, if you'd like to hear from her.
No, no, that's not the, that's not the question. The question is, the question is more, this was set as a trial run. Um, if we're gonna continue paying for the service, do we need a resolution that says that? Or are we passing the cost over to the library with this line item budget, and so it's not affecting us financially?
Yeah, the purpose, I guess, ultimately, just like we did with I T and with the museums, the purpose of setting up a separate line item for security and, you know, again, we should really look at, uh, all of the costs of the library service. They come here every year to talk to us about how much they need. We, we aren't factoring into that, how much are we paying for utilities? How much are we paying for maintenance? How much are we paying for security in this case? How much are we paying for, uh, other services? So, that, so, we, we really don't have a good picture of what a library costs us right now. So, that's what we're trying to do, is to set that up. The, the, the budget line item is not a trial item, it, it's just a trial item to only put enough money in it for three months.
Well, we've already done that, we did that September thirtieth. We put it in there for three months, and it's been three months. So, that's, my, my question is, this is gonna be an ongoing, reoccurring expense, and do we need a, a resolution to justify that expense, whereas Three Forty-eight Ninety-four was just a, a three-month trial basis? And I'm not sure, I don't recall it, it's saying that there was, uh, no reverter clause, if we don't cancel it, or anything like that. It, it And that period, yeah, that's a good point, that period may not have started until, I guess, January first.
January first.
Is that where that resolution starts?
That's when we would start the service. Ninety, the ninety days would be January, February, March. And I think we would come back to the council at the end of March and say, we wanna do it some more, or we've, uh, decided to give some money to the library service and let them hire their own, or maybe we don't decide that we didn't need it. But I think I'd like to hear from the, our librarians, to see if they feel safer.
Does she wanna speak? Does she wanna speak? Do you need security? Is it that bad?
Now, remember, not your librarian inside voice.
All right, if I sound angry, it's because I'm trying to project, it's not because I'm angry. I have the voice of a twelve-year-old, so, um, there, it is a very rare day when my staff does not have to ask someone to leave the building. Just myself personally, all five foot zero others, I have been threatened multiple times with physical violence. I've been told to watch my back. I have been told, um, that things are going to happen to me, and all of my staff have experienced this. And really don't know what the patrons are experiencing. And they're coming through the courtyard, and they're coming to use our services. We don't know what's happening in the courtyard, what's happening in the parking lot. We don't know what's happening throughout the building, because we have a job to do, and we can't always patrol the building ourselves. And it's getting to the point where, um, we need help confronting the poor behavior that happens in the building. We welcome anyone through our doors, we don't make any judgments on anyone, other than their behavior. Am I getting too soft again? Okay, we don't make any judgments on anyone who comes to use our services, other than their behavior when they are with us. But it is to the point now where we cannot fully address the poor behavior without feeling that we're putting ourselves at risk, and without taking large amounts of time away from the staff's regular duties.
Ms. Davis, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just got a message, I need to go tend to my daughter, she's being taken to the hospital.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, I, I wanna clear this up, though. I am not opposed to security at, at the library, at all. That's not what this was about. This was about understanding where the money is, how it's being spent, and who's responsible for it. That's all this is.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Tisdale.
Not a question, just an observation. As we, we deal with, uh, folks, whether they're retirees, or whether they're homeless, or whether they're just people like you and me, just having a bad day. When you open the door, and you serve the old, the lame, the blind, and anybody else who's interested in coming in. I mean, I'm just, I don't know what the percentage of, of mentally ill people is in the general population, but even if it's half of one percent, with the number of folks who come through the library, okay, you're going to have to see and deal with your share. And I would imagine, and, and, 'cause this is, to some degree, an enforcement issue, but I'm thinking, my guess is, Chief, your call from time to time, you, you probably see a lot of this, and it's tying up your staff, and they have other responsibilities, so, uh, I'm, I'm for this, and I'd love to see some feedback, just numbers, and what all that looks like, and I think that's looks like, and I think that was Mr. Deming's point as well, so thank you. That's it.
And the police have been wonderful in supporting us, but we found that we can't call them every time someone says something out of hand, every time someone gets in an altercation. If it's not something that we feel is really worth the, you know, the police's time, we ask them to leave. The staff asks them to leave. And that's when things can get pretty rough sometimes.
Do most of these instances happen in the courtyard or inside the library?
Mostly inside the library, because we do not have the staff to be able to check the courtyard on a regular basis.
Well, the other thing, my other observation I'd make is, when it's raining outside, if you're homeless, for example, if it's raining outside, it's dry inside. When it's hot outside, it's cool inside. When it's cold outside, it's warm inside.
The problem here, this is strictly a safety issue and a security issue. That's what this is.
It's a reflection of these times we live in. It's not just the library. It's a reflection of every day. We experience it at the Lighthouse Pier, we experience it everywhere, so it's a reflection of today. You know, it's security in many places, you just happen to be right here right now. But, you know, we all acknowledge that, you know, we have 80 to 90 reports of these kinds of things every week, you know? And so we're just trying to accommodate this one specifically, but, you know, we got to address this everywhere.
And it's a national problem for libraries everywhere. I mean, our doors are open to everyone.
Right, and the type of services with computers, access and so forth, that's, you know, they, there's a lot of interaction, so it's not reflective of, you know, us Biloxi specifically, or, no, it's everywhere. So we can't put our head in the sand, we just got to do the things we need to do, extraordinary things. Never used to have to do that in the past, but we do now.
Is it right that Gulfport has had to put guards in their main library?
The downtown library, the downtown Gulfport library.
Heaven forbid we should do something just because Gulfport did it, but.
Any other questions?
Sign of the times.
Do I have a, call for the question on the consent agenda?
Thank you.
All in favor? Unanimous vote with Mr. Deming out. Do I have a motion? Let's move, let's see. Do we have coenforcement? We already voted on it. All right. Motion on the routine is Felix, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Glavine. Any discussion, Mr. Lawrence?
Who's out there that tells us about the money? So as long as we stand up, that's the key, as long as we stand up to Paul, we're in good shape. That's it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the routine? Unanimous vote with Deming out of the room. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines.
I'd like to just note that we're going to do it in memory of Jerry, Mr. Jerry Creel.
Yes, sir.
Jerry Ellis.
I mean, Jerry Ellis, sorry. Sorry.
We're going to clambead.
Jerry Ellis, make that, but we could do it.
Second by all of us. All in favor? Unanimous votes. Meeting adjourned. Merry Christmas. Everyone be safe.